Order. Today is Thursday, July 25th. Clerk, if you'll call our roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Rizika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated, and justice for all.
It remains standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We will start with our public to be heard, and clerk, if you'd read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of our council meeting. As a reminder, in pursuant to City Council rules of procedure, prior to addressing councils, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks should be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council should observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. Mr. Latimore.
Mayor Tim Latimore, legislator in the 13th District. I'm proud to introduce the council, Susan Sinclair, our new administrator, and I'd like to have her maybe say a few words. First, I received a couple of letters in regards to upcoming, maybe meetings, joint meetings with the county, and I look forward to that. I think we have some common interests in a lot of different areas, and hopefully Susan will administer those and meet with Douglas and hopefully come up with a better system than we have now. So I'll introduce Susan.
Thank you. Well, good evening. My name's Suzanne Sinclair, and I am now in my fourth day as county administrator in Kyuga County. I came from, I live in Seneca Falls right now, but I have bought a home in Kyuga County, and I'm looking forward to moving into it soon. I have been exploring Kyuga County, however, and find that it is absolutely beautiful, and I enjoy it very much. The mayor had asked me to come tonight, and so I had the opportunity to meet the council and become acquainted and hopefully a familiar face, and I appreciate that invitation. Thank you very much. So, please, please do stop by if you have anything that you wish to speak with me about. I like to keep an open-door policy and look forward to meeting all of you in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Welcome to our community once again, and we look forward to working with you and getting to know you better, and hopefully you get to know us much better. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Please.
Good afternoon, mayor, councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Robert Nethercutt. I live at 3194 Barrington Way in Auburn, and I'm here representing the merry-go-round Playhouse Board of Directors, where it's my honor to serve as vice president at the moment. I've served on the Board of Directors for the merry-go-round Playhouse since 1993, on and off. You take a few years off here and there. I also had the privilege to serve on the Board of the Musical Theater Festival. I actually served, spent six or seven months working as the interim managing director of the Musical Theater Festival. So through many years of affiliation, I believe that I am a credible representative to speak on behalf of the merry-go-round. We are encouraging council and the government of this city and county to move the secret process forward as quickly as possible. Currently, we have a hole in the ground. It's not pretty. The adjoining buildings are shameful to visitors. We stand by, fully funded and ready, to build a beautiful, multifunctional arts facility, performing arts facility. We, in partnership with our colleagues at the college, have the funding to accomplish this. The merry-go-round Playhouse is one of the few organizations that is really growing and expanding. Unlike some business and industry in this city, the arts in the merry-go-round have grown 175 percent documented numbers in revenue seats sold in the last 10 years, from 2003 to 2013. When we put a performance downtown just recently, a wonderful show, 5,000 visitors came, many from the joining and surrounding communities and counties. We need this in Auburn. We're committed to wanting to build in Auburn and have a performing arts center that this community will be proud of and that will be a revenue driver and an economic engine for downtown. We've already seen the start of that. There are a handful of people that would oppose that. The, and you, and like me, we run in circles of meeting esteemed and respected businessmen and community leaders. Only a handful would say what is why, the majority, 95 percent shake their head and say, who would in their right minds stop this? We are prepared to do it, following all proper building codes and legal processes, making sure that it's a safe and wonderful facility. We encourage you, please, to do all you can to help move that process forward. Let me just say one last thing, very quickly. Today, we read in the paper about a second big star from New York, a big star from California, coming to Auburn to perform. We've had a lot of attention downstate, but the attention to what's going on in this city is not only downstate. There are communities to the west that have approached us about options. Should we, in fact, build this theater downtown, or should we take it somewhere else? I say, like I used to say to the leaders in my business, I was a plant manager at a respected local industry. Show me what we can do. Don't tell me and talk about what we can't. And I thank you for your support, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Nethercutt. Please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Zizza. I live at 7592 Healy Road, Auburn, New York, and I'm here representing the Faculty Association of Kyuga Community College. I'm here to address two points, actually in reference to letters that were distributed to the council back on June 11th, and also a follow-up letter. It was actually a CC letter that went out to the county legislature, and that was shortly after July 3rd. What I want to do is address the concerns that the faculty have with the merry-go-round theater, and also reference one piece of the letter that you folks already had, and that is, in our letter on June 11th, we asked that the Faculty Association, because of our mandated responsibilities and governance of the college, be included in documentation with this project moving forward. It is my understanding that that is in the process of happening. We haven't received anything yet, but I'm hopeful, and I want to thank you for that. That's appreciated. Secondly, I'd like to just read out loud a letter that was sent to the legislature, which I believe clearly articulates the faculty's concerns with this project, so you're aware of that, and it's in public record. As I'm sure you are aware, from recent newspaper articles, Kyuga Community College is suffering from a financial crisis, which may be impacting the success of its students and livelihood of faculty, staff, and their families in our community. The college's Board of Trustees has acted wisely in putting non-academic building projects like the proposed athletic stadium and dormitories on hold until the college's financial situation improves. However, the college's president insists that the college continue to pursue the building of the Schwartz Family Theater in downtown Auburn. We believe that the college's continued pursuit of this project is a mistake and a detriment to its educational mission. The Faculty Association supports the Finger Lakes Musical Theater Festival and believes it will have a positive impact on Auburn and Kyuga County. However, the theater has nothing to do with the college and will, after it is built, be a drain on the financial resources of the college. If the college is forced to operate the theater, its ability to provide a low-cost, quality education to Kyuga County residents will be compromised. Tuition will go up, and money that would have been spent to improve academic programs will be diverted to the operation of the theater. Currently, the president of the college has told the staff that the college cannot survive without pay cuts and staff reductions. The president has already reduced the number of teachers at the college to the lowest level in the college's history. If he continues to divert funds to the theater, the ability of the college to provide secure jobs to Kyuga County residents will be further compromised. The proposed partnership between the MTF and the college was created by the president, which was created by the president, is built on a false premise. That premise was that the theater would have an educational component and that somehow students would want to come to the college because of the new theater. That is simply not true. The theater has no classrooms and is being built as a performance space for the FLMTF, not as an educational space for the college.
Mr. Zizza, I would ask you to wrap it up, please, sir.
One quick paragraph. It should be also noted that the college already has an exceptional theater, the Bisgrove Theater, which was recently refurbished and is used by the college, its students, and the community.
Thank you, sir. Your time.
My three minutes are up?
You're three minutes plus.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening?
Yes.
Please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Quill, city council. Like Mr. Zizza, I'm here to speak on the theater and, in particular, the environmental assessment form.
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin Cox, 127 Genesee. I'll start my timer now, Mr. Quill, since I know.
I haven't.
You'll admonish me.
I'm trying to write. I haven't started. I can start the button whenever you start.
All right, go now. All right, thanks. The copy of this full, or this part one of this full EEF that I've seen, that we just saw today, is, was unsigned, and so I'm not even sure at this point if there's proper authorization to proceed in the manner in which the city's proceeding at this point. I don't know if there's, I haven't seen any city council signatures on the document, so it's just something to consider, whether it's been properly authorized. And we also object to the fact that this is a, what appears to be a one-sided presentation of the issues tonight. As we've made clear throughout this whole ordeal, the city council should listen to both sides of this, and it appears as though there's, on the agenda tonight, there's a presentation being provided, I guess, talking about the, what's being done to address these environmental concerns, but in order to have a full and fair understanding of these issues, I would, I would ask that you table this discussion and perhaps schedule a public hearing, you know, in a couple of weeks, so that both sides have a chance to present their information to the city council and that, you know, a reasoned decision can be made. And then, in the end, I think it'll just save everybody more time and effort and possible Now, there is Mr. Fusco, and I'm going to hand a transcript of this radio show that was, Mr. Fusco appeared on this week, six copies. I guess Mr. Fusco was there on behalf of the city. I assume he was authorized by somebody at the city to go on local radio and talk about the project. And during the, during the radio show, Mr. Fusco compared the situation to Falcon Park and noted how the opponents to the Falcon Park project were wrong, and that, in this case, I guess, that the opponents to the theater project are wrong, and that this whole project should be wrapped up by Labor Day. I certainly hope that, as I said, that this project or this EAF is not being ram-rodded through, as it sounds like when Mr. Fusco's comments were made. I would ask the city that they consider all the, all the evidence, all the information on both sides of this issue, all the impacts to the environment. We've raised these before. I think you'll hear comments after me about it in more detail. And I would also note that Judge Polito, in his, in his decision, that I think everybody has a copy of, but if not, I've got six more here. He specifically admonished the college for not involving the public in this process, and that appears to be what the city's doing over again. So, I would note in Judge Polito's decision, he specifically said that, and he criticized the college for not involving the public in these public meetings. It's not much of a public meeting if nobody knows it's occurring, and they're not invited to present information and ask questions themselves. So I would ask, again, in accordance with Judge Polito's decision, that the city table this and schedule a public hearing and let both sides be heard on this issue. And again, as to echo what Mr. Zizza indicated, I know the Faculty Association from the college has asked to be included in this process, and they've been excluded already. So I would just ask the city to, to be fair in this process, hear all sides, consider all opinions.
Mr. Cox, if you would wrap it up, we'd appreciate it, sir.
Sure, sure. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Please, sir.
Good evening, council. My name's Justin Huffman, also of 127 Genesee Street. I'd also like to talk about the theater project a little bit. As we have discussed before, there's this environmental review that's being done, and the city had, it's my understanding that they are discussing a sub-slab depressur, what's called a sub-slab depressurization system, to help some of these issues, some of the soil vapors that are being, that have been discovered as part of the soils. The problem here is that the city does not know whether or not the sub-slab depressurization system will mitigate all of the problems. Now, no testing has been done on the soil or the groundwater, so nobody knows the source of these contaminants. With residential apartments being part of and/or adjacent to the project site, reviewing this is critical, and I have a letter here from Certified Environmental Services, Inc., And in addition, there are all kinds, there are problems with respect to State Street immediately in front of the theater. Now, we have had a transportation engineer, Mr. Jim Napoleon, review this, and he has described various problems with State Street. And most importantly, State Street is just too narrow at the ends near the theater, and this causes major problems with emergency vehicle access. Take an example, if, God forbid, there were a theater, a fire at the theater. If a fire truck got there and ambulance got there afterwards, the ambulance would have major problems getting out of there. While the city has since added a side alley to the project to give an additional exit to the theater, this still empties out onto State Street, which causes the same problems. And I have a letter from Mr. Napoleon explaining that, as well as other issues we have with the State Street issue. And while the proponents of the theater may claim that some, there's some sort of exemption for this, former county code, Kyuga County Code Enforcement Officer Jerry Vivone has stated otherwise, and I have an affidavit from him explaining that issue. And quite simply, we want this project to be reviewed completely and not just a predetermined decision already rubber, ready to rubber stamp. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Mr. Sales.
Mayor, council, everybody in the chamber, again, thanks for the opportunity to comment. And I was going to say something, but now I've already pretty much decided what to do because some, so many issues have been presented.
We need your name and address for the record, please.
I apologize. I'm sorry. As the mayor noted, my name is Ed Sales, and I live at 5661 South Street Road. Did you reset my clock? No, I promise not to use three minutes.
I just started. There's more people watching it than yourself, so you're getting.
All right, thank you.
Everyone does.
It's my great good fortune to be the producer of the merry-go-round Playhouse and the Finger Lakes Musical Theater Festival, and it's in that capacity that I'm speaking. We have a dream that I think we share with most of this community, and I know we share it with all 7,320 residents of Auburn who purchase tickets to go to the Playhouse each summer, and that is that we return the city to the glory that we know it achieved and that it deserves. Part of that, our small effort, is the creation of the Musical Theater Festival to revive downtown. One of the things we wanted to do was to put a brand-new facility downtown. We partnered with the college to do that. To address Mr. Aziza's remarks and.
Please address the chair, if you would, please, sir.
In addressing to the chair, Mr. Aziza's remarks, okay? We did work with the faculty before embarking on this decision to the building. We consulted people. It wasn't a matter-of-fact thing, and I'm not going to get into the details, but we did have a big fact-finding session and a number of meetings with the faculty. Out of that, we looked at establishing a theater which in itself would be a classroom. I think we all know that there are different kinds of classrooms these days. That's why we have Take Your Children to Work Day. That's why you all have people in to work in city government one day from the high schools, because the world is a classroom. The theater that's being constructed, one, would have a working, modern facility at which students from the local community college, as well as other colleges, would be able to study theater technology. There are also rooms in the basement when performances are not being done that would actually service classrooms. In addition, the box office and the computer systems would be available for business courses. We are pledging, as an organization and a partner with the college, to make sure that in the operation of the building, the college will achieve a net positive impact on their budget. The Finger Lakes Festival is using it during the summer. DASNY and private funds have paid for the construction of the building. We'll have a wonderful facility to which we can do events in the summer, bring people downtown, and earn revenue for the college. We will partner in that. It will be positive. We can make the pie bigger, or we can make it smaller, and I think we have to make it bigger. In terms of the comments from these gentlemen who work at an unnamed office on Genesee Street, the public comment period, which would be part of the secret process, will allow the entire community, all of the community, to comment on this process. And I would just urge council and the mayor and the agencies of the city to move us as quickly forward to the point where everybody in the community, whether they're in favor of the building or not in favor of the building, will have a chance to comment, and that is why the regulations call for a 30-day public comment period. That's what we want to get to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sales. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Please, Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Meg Vanek. I'm the executive director of the Kyuga County Office of Tourism located at 131 Genesee Street in the Camardo Building. I'd like to cordially invite the mayor and city council to visit our office any day a show is going on in downtown and experience the vitality and excitement that it has brought. It's truly rewarding to have visitors come in and not only talk about the theater, but where they're going to eat, where they're going to stay that night, what else they can see and do. It's new money being brought into our community, and we ask you to please move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to be heard? In the back, please. Yeah, Mr. Leo Graham.
Good evening. My comments are not as big as this theater festival.
Name and address.
My name is Joe Leo Graham. I live on the corner of East Genesee Street and North Seward, 161 East Genesee. I thought the city was supposed to promote businesses in town, and I see a lot of signs on the public right-of-way. Just on the way here, I counted 29 signs, some on private property and probably about 15 on the public right-of-way. I was told today that I'm going to be getting a violation for promoting the Auburn Laundry. I have two signs in my yard that say Auburn Laundry Now Open, and the owner that lives across the street from me has two signs in his yard, and I was told I was going to get a violation in the mail today. We have Cash for Gold, Theater Parking Arrow signs, Tattoo Sale Today, Real Estate for Sale signs, Ceiling Driveway signs, Baseball Tonight signs, Open House Real Estate signs, Tires, Buy Three Get One Free, and there's a dozen of them, Bark for Your Dog, Bingo signs, Summer Work Available, Pizza by the Slice. I got a call tonight, coincidentally, that somebody wanted to put some 4-8 signs on my lawn. I hope I don't get a violation for those. I think it's what I consider selective enforcement in my house. These are little step-stake signs that I put up to promote a business in town, a new business, and I'm constantly getting violations in the mail for various things, some legitimate, some not so legitimate. And today, when I heard that I was going to get a violation in the mail, which hasn't come yet, I was irate. So on the way here, I just counted 29 signs on public property and some on private property. Where's the enforcement? Am I being picked on? I don't know, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention because I'm really upset now. Thank you.
Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? That's it? Very well. We'll close our public to be heard, and we will belong to the approval of the meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2013. Transferred by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rizika. Discussion, council? If you'd call the roll, please, clerk.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rizika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Our first presentation is listed as by Ed Wagner. Mr. Wagner is not, was not available tonight, so we asked Tony Gichardi, who is a deputy supervisor of Town of Owosco, if you will give us your presentation on the Owosco, on the I-81 project. Tony, please. And we're not going to limit you to three minutes, and I haven't started the time yet, so.
I'm limited to three minutes? Thank you very much.
No, 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 no. We're going to give you all evening. You cannot give your time to anyone else, but we're going to give you as much you want.
This evening, I'd like to recap the Owosco Town Hall meeting that we had on Monday, and also encourage the Auburn City Council to pass a resolution similar to those passed by the area towns of Owosco, Fleming, Senate, Skene Atlas, and Aurora concerning the Route 81 project. The Owosco Town Hall meeting Monday was very well-attended, including Senator Jim Seward, Deborah Nelson, who's the project manager for the Route 81 program, as well as Mayor Mike Quill and city manager Doug Selby. So far, I've passed all the name identification tests. The meeting was, I think, well, well-attended and well-thought-out. Senator Seward spent some time discussing what he has done to promote involvement of the citizens of the area to learn more about what is going, what is planned, and how to take part in the planning. Deborah Nelson, who spent a lot of time reiterating that the decisions haven't been made and that the decision will be made as, as a result of the input of meetings such as the one we had in Owosco. Many people in Owosco and the other towns are very concerned about the project. The project is rated from about $600 million to $2.5 billion. The different alternatives range from the $600 million figure to just repair some of the issues that have arisen after 50 years of Route 81's existence, to the $2.5 billion idea of burying the Route 81 through the city. Now, the issue that's compounded some of the problems that we've had with truck traffic is the idea of a boulevard. The boulevard would probably promote, no doubt promote, more truck traffic through the towns of Owosco, Senate, Fleming, Skene Atlas, and Aurora, of those trash haulers going to the Seneca Meadows. So it's a very, it's a very concerning issue. So tonight, I'd like to just review some of the things that Ed Wagner stated on. Some of the issues include public safety. Public safety is, is one that, one we have to look at pretty closely because those trucks, I know for a fact, coming out of Martin Point, come down that hill, come pretty fast, and they're very dangerous if you're not paying attention. And they also cause concerns with bicycle traffic and other people on the road. They don't attempt to slow down. They add to congestion of our roads, and they compound a number of other issues. Escalated deterioration of infrastructure. Those heavy trucks cause roads to deteriorate much more quickly than they would normally, so that's an expense that local governments have to pick up, and it's, it's a problem. And it, and it causes pollution, and it causes folks to be concerned about many different problems, including the odor of the trucks going by hauling garbage from New York City. We're concerned about the historical structures in Auburn. There's many well-known historical. There's many well-known historical structures that are adjacent to the roads that these trucks use, and these structures are being subjected to destructive vibrations as a result of the size and weight of the trash haulers. Many of these sites are irreplaceable. Two examples are, or at least one example, is the Seward House on Route 34. Access to health care, there is a concern that in addition to the problems of the truck traffic, congested truck traffic, if one is heading for an emergency hospital appointment, you could be bogged down or caught in traffic. And probably the most important issue is the quality of life, with concerns the trash truck haulers. Having the deterious effects of the very quality of life in the Town of Owosco and the greater Finger Lakes area, we respectfully request that all seriousness is that whatever final decision is made, that truck traffic and its effect on the citizens and neighbors of these small towns is considered. We have the balance of decades-long effects as a result of decisions being considered. We feel that we've made some progress due to the efforts of the past administration, John Klink and Eddie Wagner. Trash haulers currently go by the Route 81 and the thruway loaded and empty at Seneca Meadows, but after they're empty, they can go anywhere they want, so they're going to take the quickest route, and that's through the towns that I mentioned. The Route 81 project, if we're successful in bringing awareness to folks regarding not building the boulevard in Syracuse, is not going to improve our situation, it's going to maintain what we have. If they don't, if they do a Route 81 boulevard, the truck traffic will increase, and we're very concerned about that. So it's an important issue, but it's a tough issue, because it really is, it comes down to money. I'm told that there are 60,000 trucks dropping trash off every year, and I think a few years ago, it was $40 a ton, and those trucks haul 10, 20 tons. So it's a very, very lucrative operation, and it's one that is going to be around for a long time, at least the next 30 years. So we really just want to maintain the status quo and not have truck traffic increase to the point where it's more aggravating than it already is. So we would encourage you, as a council, to pass a resolution similar to the ones that the local towns passed. I have a copy of one that I'd be glad to give to you for your consideration, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding this important issue. Are there any questions?
Tony, I have one. What is, what is the resolution state that was passed by the towns? Could you share that with the public?
I can read it to you. Whereas the future of I-81 presents one of the greatest planning decisions to face in New York State in decades, and the outcome will impact our region for generations to come. And whereas it is the sense of Owosco Town Board that any decision reached by New York State Department of Transportation should satisfy function first, including safety, efficiency of transportation for personnel, and commercial use, and provide and minimize unintended consequences. It is therefore resolved that it is the opinion of the Owosco Town Board that the unintended consequences of creating any significant changes to Route 81, including creating a boulevard, could potentially alter the flow of heavy commercial traffic and increase truck traffic flow through the Town of Owosco, State Route 38A, and thereby causing safety issues and decreasing the quality of life for Owosco residents. And be it further resolved, the Owosco Town Board requests that the New York State Department of Transportation seek a solution to the Route 81 redesign that does not pose negative effects to smaller, outlaying communities, and be it further resolved that the existing Interstate 81 alignment through Syracuse and central New York must remain in its functions and designation as an interstate highway, must not be removed or impaired, and be it further resolved that the town clerk of the Town of Owosco is hereby directed to cause a copy of this resolution to be transmitted to the New York State Department of Transportation, Syracuse Metropolitan Transportation Council, and the Kewa County Legislature.
Tony, what was there, I'm sure the Department of Transportation was there that evening?
Deborah Nelson.
What kind of input did they give you about alleviating the city of Auburn and some of the towns with this heavy traffic that you're talking about?
Well, my personal opinion, I think what we're concerned about is that the decision's not already made. She, as I mentioned when I began, repeatedly said that the decision hasn't been made, and that it will be made based on the input of meetings such as the one we had on Monday throughout the area. It's going to come down to, I think it should come down to, an issue of not only the impact it has on the communities that are involved, but cost. I don't think, I don't think New York State is that well-heeled at the moment, so $2.5 billion is a lot of money, though much of it is going to be federally funded. But the federal government, last I looked, wasn't doing that well either.
You still had a lot of representatives from the state there, at your meeting the other day, correct?
Well, we had two. We had Senator Jim Seward, and we had Gary Finch.
And I'm sure they're going to speak on our behalf, all of our behalf?
Well, I, yes, yes. They are speaking on our behalf. DOT, DOT and the federal government are the ones that are going to make the decision.
We have two years, correct?
About two years.
For what they're going to do with this study?
Mm-hmm.
Now, you seem kind of skeptical of DOT and their position of...
Well, there was, I guess, a remark made by Ms. McDonald, who's the DOT chairperson a couple of weeks ago, that kind of intimated that a decision was made. She had to do a backtracking, back steps to correct that, but I don't know.
So with two years to do a quote-unquote comprehensive study of how it's going to affect the surrounding towns, you feel that their decision's already been made?
No, I'm hoping the decision hasn't been made.
Now, Tony, did you reach out to Schumer's office and Gillibrand also for the, on the other end of it?
Yes, yes.
And what response did you get from them?
It was positive.
They're writing the, writing the check, so they should have some kind of say in what's going to happen.
Right.
Tony, I know they really haven't got a real good handle on actually how long this is going to be in construction. Obviously, it depends on the method that's used, but I can easily see the situation that we're having, where we're located, and we would become the new shortcut.
Absolutely.
To 81.
Let me just repeat what the alternatives are. As it was described to us, the first alternative is to repair those areas that are in most need. The second alternative is to redo the road the way it was done originally, reconstruct it in the same manner. The third is a boulevard through the city, and the fourth is to bury the road through the city. Of course, burying the road through the city is the most expensive.
Tony, not to correct you, but at the same time, they also mentioned a loop to the west, but that was extremely cost-provoked. They wouldn't even consider that.
They said it was too costly, and disrupt the neighborhoods too much, but...
Well, if anybody, as far as the tunneling, if anybody remembers that far back to the Big Dig in Boston, that was a number of years into making. Had a great deal of problems with that, even after construction, where roof tiles and roof clay, or granite pieces were coming down and hitting cars. So that's, that's a lessons learned there, is, you know, what to avoid, I guess. The way I see it, you know, if we're going to have our own Big Dig here, I think it's, we're going to be in for a good number of years of the traffic.
I think that's the least likely.
I understand that, but I'm, the potential exists.
But what's the Big Dig, three times more than what they estimated?
Four.
Four times?
Still going in, isn't it?
And the repair work that has to follow, and the maintenance is outrageous.
Tony, I want to thank you for coming and expressing the towns' concerns on this, but the timeline, you says two years on it?
Two years.
Two years to do the study of surrounding communities, the effects of it.
That, yes, and get, and trying to get as much input from the area as possible.
So I'm sure there's going to be public hearings and community meetings?
I would think there'd be many public hearings. And there's a website to, that's Route 81 Challenge, where people can take a look at what is going on, where it's going on, i81challenge.org.
Tony, what kind of, what kind of candy are they offering? I mean, are they offering these communities that are going to be affected by this, any?
None.
Not that it matters?
Not that I know of, at this point in time.
Well, if, the other thing, as you mentioned, the vibration, that's what exactly is destroying a coliseum in Rome, is the vibration from the truck traffic right now, and they're contending with that. They've had several sections of that fall because of that.
It's pretty old, too.
Understood, but it wouldn't fall if it wasn't subject to that vibration.
Well, I think you have to put yourself into the, into the shoes of those folks who live adjacent to those highways. It's constant aggravation between the speeding and the brakes, because the braking causes a lot of noise, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, they come down the highways, and it's very disturbing, particularly in the summer when the windows are open, so.
You're talking about the jake brakes on a truck?
Mm-hmm. So it's, it's an important issue. It is a quality of life issue.
So Doug, will we see a resolution in the next couple of weeks to support Tony's efforts and the Town of Owosco's efforts?
If that's the direction of the council, we'll put it together.
I think so. Thank you, Tony. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm sure Eddie would have been more, more of an expert at what was going on, because he did all the research, and he's worked very hard. As a matter of fact, much credit goes to John Klink, Eddie's predecessor, and Eddie, for the work they've done to get us where we are. I mean, we are better off today than we were five years ago, but we could go backwards really quickly if there's a boulevard built in Syracuse. Thank you.
Tony, could you inform us of any changes in that program or whatever, since you guys are right on top of it?
Be glad to.
Thank you.
Be glad to. Thanks again, everyone.
You didn't use all your three minutes, though, Tony.
Just a few meeting announcements. On Tuesday, August 6, the Planning Board will meet here at City Hall at 6:30 PM. On Wednesday, the 7th, the Human Rights Commission will meet at 5:00 PM. And a note about our streamline, the recycling schedule that is usually published, is not published as it usually is, and we just want to make sure everyone knows that you can get your August recycling schedule online, the homepage of the city's website. It's right on the homepage at the top. It's a downloadable document, and we're going to put one in the newspaper as well, so that everyone could get, easily get to it. And I've put some on the podium, if anybody would like to take one home. That's it.
Thank you. City manager's report?
I was going to mention what Debbie just mentioned about the streamline, so thank you. Couple items. Last week, we had the opportunity, staff and myself, to visit the Madison County landfill. It was a meeting that we set up for AMPA, our power agency, to look at solar panels, and, because AMPA's proposing a possible project where solar panels will be installed on the city's landfill, the closed landfill. So we were able to see an installation there in Madison County. They're very pleased with the performance of it, and we learned quite a bit about do's and don'ts, and how keeping seagulls from dropping their waste on it is an important aspect of the day-to-day operation out there. The other item is just an update on the Mack Studio project. I think you'll recall that the council authorized negotiation of a land transfer sale to Mack Studios for an expansion that's pending in the Technology Park. There've been a number of hurdles, including the identification of wetlands on the site that require federal approval for mitigation. We've moved forward with consultants to take that process into the federal process, so the mitigation can be determined, and we can get potential approval for that mitigation. The challenge, as I see it, is going to be the cost of the mitigation, and we've had some discussions with Mack Studios about how that might shake out in terms of shared costs, but it's premature at this point to reach any particular conclusion. But I just want to give the council a heads-up that the project continues to move forward. Peter Makowitz is committed to moving the project forward, but we have reached this hurdle with regard to the wetlands and the federal requirements that we have to meet before a project can be built. That's it.
Doug, if that gets to be too cost-provoked for the city, I mean, if we, we're not in a financial situation to do a great deal there. At some point, once the costs, if they'd be, are too much, and, you know, it's probably a price of a cake down the Wegmans, if it's probably going to be too much, we're just going to have to say no. So unfortunately, that's, that's the way it is. We cannot afford to hit that general fund for this type of improvement.
No, understood, and I've advised Peter of the same, and he's aware of that situation.
Okay. Well, I just don't want to have any surprise there that he thinks that...
We're trying to explore, and he has said that he'd be willing to consider covering half of the mitigation cost, but we need to look at, and I've told him, we don't have, we don't have the money to cover even half, the other half, but if we can creatively come up with a method of somehow giving him some credit or something like that, but we'd bring that back to the council in the form of an agreement to be executed prior to any commitment.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have one thing. Doug, could you give us an update on the recent TRO that was issued by the court in regard to the fire department? Yes, just briefly.
You may want to give a little lead-in, so people at home will know what's...
Yeah, just, for background, the city's been engaged in negotiations with our firefighter union. Those negotiations were, you know, both sides moving towards what we hoped would be an acceptable agreement. We couldn't get close enough to reasonably think that our negotiations would reach that point, so an impasse was declared. At that point, we went into a mediation process, and you'll get a report in executive session this evening about that. During that negotiation process, though, the city took the position that a staffing minimum that's set forth in the contract expired effective July 1. That minimum staffing would require 14 employees, firefighters on duty, 24/7 throughout the city, and that's been a provision in the contract. The union has challenged that and sought judicial restraining order against us enforcing that, in other words, enforcing that provision, which we have, in our opinion, has expired. So we are now enjoined from dropping below the 14-man minimum, and we are basically staffing at that level at this point.
The reason why I ask this is I would hope that you would come back to council for any hires that you're going to have, because if, I know they're going back to court in August, the end of August, I believe, there's a hearing in August.
That would be a hearing on an injunction.
An injunction, and if that, if that does, if that is issued, or if a temporary restraining order is in effect at the time, we have budgeted in the budget quite a, quite a bit of money towards the reduction in the fire department. I believe it was $700,000, and we need to look at how we're going to make up some of that cost if we don't, we aren't able to work this out. So I would hope that you would come back to council on any new hires that you have, so that we can, instead of putting somebody out of a job before we fill any positions, that we could look at those, so we have cost savings in the event that something like this happens.
Right.
Doug, were they required to post a bond on that?
The union was required to post a... The union was required to post a bond. That bond was established in the event that the city prevails. The additional costs that we'd incur during this period of the TRO, we covered by the union. If the union prevailed, they would just keep their money.
Okay. So this bond is just to bridge it to this hearing, and if further action is there, they'll have to re-bond, is what you're saying, if there's...
I'm not sure I can tell you the details about that procedure.
Understood.
We will have our legal counsel here this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Presentation of petitions and communications? Seeker resolutions?
None.
First reading of bond ordinance number seven.
I was going to ask, in the past, we've been just reading the first five sections and the last three. Would that still be something you're...
Settle right, counsel.
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. Bond ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $250,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of sidewalk improvements. Be it ordained by the council of the City of Auburn, New York, as follows. Section 1, the City of Auburn, New York, is hereby authorized to undertake the reconstruction or construction of replacement sidewalks of brick, stone, or concrete, and handicap access curbing at an estimated maximum cost of $250,000, and to issue an aggregate $250,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforesaid object or purpose. Section 2, it is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforesaid specific object or purpose is $250,000, and that amount is hereby appropriated, therefore, and the plans for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $250,000 in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. Section 3, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforesaid specific object or purpose is 10 years pursuant to paragraph 24 of section 11A of the local finance law. Section 12, this ordinance, or a summary of this ordinance, shall be published in the official newspapers of the city for such purpose, together with a notice of the clerk of the city, and substantially the form provided in section 81 of the local finance law. Section 13, this ordinance is not subject to a mandatory or permissive referendum. Section 15, the council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. Section 15, this ordinance will take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Mr. Selby, that'll be on next week's agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Resolutions?
None.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation. Counsel, with your permission, because we have all our invited guests here this evening, I would like the permission to move up item C to number A, and is the other two are internal matters, and is that agreeable with counsel?
We won't be discussing A tonight, though, right?
I'm sorry?
We will not even be discussing A tonight.
I do not know what Mr. Selby has. I think he's, I believe he's going to be...
Item A, I was going to give some background. We've given you a big packet of stuff, so it'll be relatively brief.
Anyone opposed to it?
It's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Selby, would you like to start out, or how would you like to handle this discussion on...
Well, I believe Mr. Fusco is going to kind of lay the groundwork and explain where we're at and where we go from here.
Andy, before you start, for all you folks, after we're done discussing this, you're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the evening, but we know you have other things that may be more favorable to do this evening, so enjoyable to do, not favorable.
Tonight we begin our environmental review of the Schwartz Theater project. My comments will be rather brief. Instead, I will defer to the attorney for the college and the president of the college and any invited guests that they have to outline to you what they see as the environmental concerns of this project, and what measures, if any, they plan to invoke to mitigate or address the project. Just as an overview, I have supplied to you in the past the decision of the appellate division that was reviewing Mr. Camardo's first and second lawsuits against the city, and I have also provided you a copy of Judge Polito's Supreme Court decision from late this spring, which addressed Mr. Camardo's fourth and fifth lawsuits in this particular matter. It is that, are those two decisions which effectively be the roadmap by which we proceed in the next few weeks in a manner that is consistent with those decisions. We are under a court order to conduct a seeker review. The prior seeker review that was conducted by the college was deemed to be improper, and we, as the city council, have been ordered to do that. So that the question of tabling that came up during the public-to-be-heard portion of the meeting simply isn't available to us. We are under an order to do this job and do it we shall. Further, we are under a court order to come up with a certain decision, a certain bottom-line, final decision. Now, how we get there, the methodology will be a give-and-take along the way, but we are ordered to issue what is called a conditioned negative declaration, whereby we will do parts 2 and 3 of the environmental assessment form that I have provided you, identifying what we think are the environmental issues occasioned by this project, and then coming up with the methodology, if any, to address those particular concerns. Thus far, I think I see four things we ought to be thinking about, however, more or less may come before us in the next couple of weeks. Certainly, the issue of ground vapors is something that we have to take a hard look at, and we have to address. The fourth department spoke to that, so that's item number one. Item number two that we need to take a hard look at is the accessibility of the state street for fire and emergency vehicles, and the propriety or the attractiveness of whatever methodologies that the project sponsor and our own police, excuse me, our own fire department have come up with an alternative to some of the state building and fire code provisions that Mr. Huffman talked about earlier in the public-to-be-heard portion. The third thing, which may or may not be an issue, is the building is a little bit different now in 2013 than it was when Councilor Graney, Councilor Smith, and Mayor Quill heard this project the first time around. So whether there are or are not environmental issues occasioned by the slightly different change in the building is something that we need to take a hard look at. Maybe you won't think that there's environmental issues presented or not, but that's something we need to look at. The fourth issue will be the groundwater issue that Mr. Cox referred to in the public-to-be-heard portion of the meeting. Because we did not use the environmental assessment long form or full form the first time we did this two years ago, we never did come to a conclusion as to whether there is a groundwater environmental concern or not. We didn't specifically answer that question, because the short form doesn't address that question. The long form, which we're using this time around, does address that question. So because Mr. Camardo raised groundwater as an issue in his first, second, fourth, and fifth lawsuits, and the city took the position, and the college took the position, and the county took the position, that the groundwater issue isn't an issue at all, however Judge Polito wasn't able to come to that conclusion. He said, "I can't, from the record, as you know, having read the decision, I can't conclude that you made no finding of significance or insignificance regarding groundwater, so I think it behooves us this time around to take a hard look at that and make a determination of whether there is significance or there isn't significance." The beauty of using the long form is it asks you 19 very specific questions, and you answer yea, nay, or somewhere in-between to every single one of them, so that there's no question of what your findings will be this time around. As far as the issue of the public-to-be-heard, there shall be no intention or no opportunity to exclude the public from this process. This process will take place in this chamber on notice over the next following few weeks or even more longer than that. The public will be allowed to be heard at every course of the juncture. We begin every one of our meetings with a public-to-be-heard session, specifically because we are ordered to issue a conditioned negative declaration. Before we finalize this process, there is a 30-day regulation period for the public to comment as well. So any perception that the public is going to be excluded, or that we're going to do something not transparent, simply is not true, and it strikes me as a bit of a red herring. And just in a matter of housekeeping, as you know, the five of you from your experience, how seeker matters are generally done in the City of Auburn, is that our staff reviews the project, helps you prepare usually only part 2 of the environmental assessment form. In this case, you'll probably be preparing answers to parts 2 and 3. And in the past, it's always been Steve Selvick, who's been our go-to guy, in helping you answer those various questions presented in parts 2 and 3 of the project, and making recommendations, which you generally tend to endorse and support. Unfortunately, Mr. Selvick has left the employ of the city and is not going to be coming back for this particular project, but I'm happy to report that I think we've landed on our feet on that issue, in that Steve Lynch, with whom you're all familiar with from his prior service in this building, has agreed to take on the task. He's here tonight, just really came on board within the last 48 hours, has done a lot of listening and note-taking tonight, and will begin our assistance in reviewing the project. I had hoped that perhaps we'd be in a position to start answering parts 2 and 3 of the EAF at our August 1st meeting. Steve has advised me, he doesn't think he's going to be able to be up to speed by then, so this may take a little bit longer than we originally envisioned, but as much time as we need to do this thing right, we ought to take. The great thing about having Steve on the project is that he's been on this thing from day one. I remember the very, very first meeting that was ever held on this particular Schwartz Theater, it didn't even have a name back then, on this theater project back in December 2010, up on the third floor of this particular building, and Steve was there that day. And Steve Lynch and Steve Selvick worked very, very closely in getting us to the point that we are at, so certainly I feel comfortable, as should you, in having Steve on board. With that, I'll turn over the microphone to the attorney for the college, Wendy Marsh, who will outline or give us an overview of the project and the project sponsor's ideas, and then I'll sit back here and come back up if any of you have questions for me. Yes, Bill?
Andy, I got a question now. The college comes back and MTF comes back with their findings. Now, what happens if they get challenged?
What happens when they get challenged? I'm not naive to think there won't be a sixth lawsuit.
Okay. So it goes to court?
Yeah, it will be acting court.
So we don't make that decision?
Correct. We don't, yeah. You'll do your job. You'll follow Judge Polito's orders. You'll follow the fourth department's orders. I'll guide you through that. Mr. Lynch will guide you through that. But I'm not naive to think that there won't be a sixth lawsuit.
Andy, if, either way, we're going to go to court. If we don't pass the seeker, we're going to court, correct? Because aren't we under obligation by the judge?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
So if we don't do a seeker review, we're going to go to court, and if we do do a seeker review, we're going to go to court?
Well, it's not necessarily us doing the seeker, we will be in court. It's just that if someone has brought five lawsuits to stop this thing, you know, common sense says there'll probably be a sixth.
All right, so it'll be challenged. Now, you mentioned, I will say the one thing, and we obviously have to take the safety as a major priority, and the state street that was mentioned early, the narrow entrance. And I think, I believe I saw the fire department and the ambulance there this week. Were they testing it out, or were they there on business?
I know the chief has sent fire trucks down there to measure and basically set the trucks up, see how it would work.
Okay. So if the existing code says that the street width is not adequate, okay, and God forbid, let's say there was a fire and someone was harmed, are we liable because we were violation of the code? So what do we need to do to fix that? Do we need to eliminate parking on one side of the street? Would that solve the issue?
That could solve the issue.
It makes the street...
The, you know, making it a drop-off zone as opposed to a parking zone would make it wide enough. But I think, I asked the chief to come on August 1st. Now he'll probably get pushed back to August 8th. I think when you hear his rationale for the alternatives to accessing the roof of the building with cranes that have been included in the project, namely a staircase with a standpipe on the south side of the building, I think you're going to be comforted to hear him say he prefers that method of accessing the roof for fire safety to using a crane. Regarding the various trials that he's been running in getting fire trucks and emergency vehicles up there, I think he's satisfied with the width of the entrances of the street, but I'm not going to speak for him. He'll speak to that directly when he's here on, probably August 8th, maybe the 15th, whenever.
Well, we just heard from the, in the public-to-be-heard, that there's another one from ex-county code officer disputing that. So to err on the side of caution, why do we not just let the state come in and tell us, is it fire compliant or not? Let's take away all the local politics and let the state tell us.
Yeah. I don't think that we need the state to do that.
Well, Andy, I'm saying, we've got local politics here. I'm just very leery about us signing on to something when it means public safety, especially in a fire situation or an emergency situation. My concern, and my biggest concern, is that because of the political climate, that we make a mistake here. I say, let's not do that, let's not subject it to political viewpoint, let's have the state come in, weigh on it, and end the story.
Well, and I think that that, I think that that may or may not be a wise way to go. There's a state variance process that is contained in the code as well. I have talked to the chief about that. But let's wait until we hear the information and then make our decision. I agree with you that because no one, no... I agree with you that because no one, no court has yet decided this particular issue, the width of the street, the use of the staircase with a standpipe as an alternative to cranes, and the arguable constriction of the north and south end of the street, because no court has decided that one yet, that is an issue that would be difficult for me to predict right now how that's going to go. And I agree with you that we use all due caution when that issue arises.
Because like I say, right now, we've got two conflicting stories here. One that the chief is coming up with, and the other one that this county code enforcement officer is. So to me, that's, they're both in conflict with each other. Let's end it, use the state. If there's a state can come in here, put their way in it, if there's a way around things that they see and they'll put their name to it, it almost indemnifies the city against any liability.
Well, I'm sure the project's developers are listening right now, so I'll let them comment on that.
Please, Wendy. Either podium, whichever sits you best is fine.
Thank you, Andy. My name is Wendy Marsh. I'm with Hancock Astor Brook, and I represent the college and have assisted the college through the seeker process that they reviewed and have been intimately involved in the case, including Judge Polito's decision. And as Andy says, you know, really, you, city council, have been directed to issue a conditioned negative declaration. I know we've had to argue all the legal arguments on this, but the decision is pretty clear as far as the direction that was given, and we're all trying to follow that decision and do what the judge has said so that we can complete the seeker process and move this project forward. Andy raised four issues, and what we have here today is we thought we would have Karen Green from JMZ to explain the project, because there has been some changes from the last time that the negative declaration was issued. And she will touch on some of those fire code issues that were discussed here. And then we also have Julian Clark from Plumlee Engineering, and he assisted the college in completing the part two and part three that the college completed in issuing its negative declaration. And he will be able to speak to the sub-slab depressurization system and some of the sampling that has been completed. And what I see tonight is somewhat of a rollout of the project and the information that was in part one of the environmental assessment form before the obligation will turn back to this board with the assistance of Steve Lynch in preparing part two and part three of the environmental assessment form. So with that, I will ask Karen to give an overview of the project.
Hi, I'm Karen Green. I'm principal and project architect at JMZ Architects, and I've been working on the project for the past couple of years. I have with me some handouts of the floor plans, the section and the elevation, which I think might be helpful to give you now before I walk you through the project. And I also have some large project boards that I could display, depending on what you think would work the best.
Probably want to set it up somehow so we, maybe over here behind you, so the camera can get some of that for the folks at home. So take your time and set it up.
Okay.
Set the board up here in central.
You can set the board up here, whatever's.
Central.
Rather have it here or here?
It's too tall.
Yeah, we could try it here. That'll be fine. It's gonna help the viewers at home, it's gonna block me from being seen, so it's gonna help considerably.
I think they'll probably, they may be favorable in that, Mike.
Agree.
Thanks.
Can everybody hear me if I go to this center and speak?
Is there a microphone you can turn around?
building. The main part of the program is a three-hundred-seat theater that fronts on a stage of about a thousand square feet. There's a nine-hundred-square-foot main public lobby off State Street, and then the box office. That primarily occupies the ground floor. In the basement, we have support spaces, the dressing rooms, wardrobe, some storage. There's a space for orchestra that will also be a classroom, and the mechanical, electrical, and utility spaces are also in the basement. Just some brief facts and figures about the building. The total square footage of the building is twelve thousand five hundred. The footprint at the ground level is five thousand seven hundred square feet, and you'll see, we'll talk a little bit about that footprint, how it fits on State Street and the creation of a egress court to the south. And the total height of the building above State Street is about thirty-eight feet from the entry. The street does slope slightly, so that's the height from the entry to the ground floor. So I thought I'd start by walking you through the ground floor first. I think it's easier to get oriented that way. That's the second page in your handout. State Street is on this side, and the alley is here. North is up, south is down. We have, the main entry to the building is right off State Street, the lobby, box office off the lobby, and then there are two entries into the theater to the north and south. There is the elevator and the front stair in the south that's been talked about a little bit. This stair is continuous from the basement to the roof. It also has a standpipe with connections at every level and allows access to the roof. The elevator is right next to it and connects the basement and this floor and the catwalk level. The house is here, and then the stage is here. There is a stair in the back corner that serves as egress from the basement and from the stage. There's an egress to the side, to the south here, to our egress court, that is a second means of egress from the stage and also egress from the house. Egress from the house would be here through the egress court. You can also go back through the two entries you came from and out through the front lobby. If there aren't any questions about that level, I can talk about what's in the basement. And that's the first page of your handout. Coming down to the basement, you would either take, as a member of the public, this front south stair or the elevator. There's a small lower lobby that has the public toilets adjacent, the classroom orchestra space, and some mechanical space on this side. There's a door here, and to this side of the door, there's the support spaces for the theater, lead dressing rooms, staff toilets and kitchenette, larger dressing rooms, wardrobe space, storage, electrical room, this is where electrical service comes in. Some of the meters come in in this room here next to the toilet rooms, and we have some mechanical space here as well. There's a back stair here, the one I just talked about, that allows access to the stage for the staff and performers, and also is egress from the basement. The two means of egress from the basement are this back stair and the front stair here, where you would come up and exit at ground level. I think I'll spend a little bit of time maybe talking about the section, so you can see how the building stacks up if you took a slice through it. Imagine you took a cutter through the building, and now you've pulled it away and you're looking inside. This side of the section is State Street, and this side is the alley. So you can see the vertical relationships of the spaces. You come in off of State Street. Here's the public lobby here. You would come around, and the house really is, you can see the green, the majority of the building. These are the tiers with the three-hundred seats. The stage is here. It's three feet above grade level here, and then we have the support spaces underneath in the basement. This is the height I was talking about, the thirty-eight feet or so from State Street to the roof. There's also a tech booth, excuse me, and then a projection out to State Street where the idea was it's a living marquee. You can kind of see the activity of the theater, and it would enliven the street front, and, you know, you can really bring a lot of life to the street. And then here you see the catwalks that have a lot of the technical, the spotlights and other instruments that support the shows. And there are a few mechanical units on the roof as well. Moving up to mezzanine level, this is the south stair. As a member of the public, you would either take the stair or elevator up if your seats were up at this level into a small upper hall. There's a door here. There's the living marquee that we talked about, that glass projection out towards State Street, this tech booth, and the sound area for the sound engineer. And then you're really looking down on those three-hundred seats of the theater. There is a little bit of service space up here, some mechanical, and then a multi-use platform that might be for small orchestra, might be used as a balcony scene, depending on the play, but would have some technical folks or performers here. And then this is where you start to access the catwalk level. So next level up, we're up in this area of the section now, up in the top, below the structure. The stair continues up to this level. This is really, would be for technical folks only. You can access the catwalk here. We also have some ladders that the technical staff would come up on these galleries, lighting gallery and a loading gallery, and there's some openings through the proscenium that connect to this donut-shaped catwalk. There's more mechanical space and some storage space off of this area. And just the last piece of your handout has the rendering. What we were trying to do was be sympathetic to the historical buildings on State Street. We looked a lot at the materials, the brick, the stone, the architectural vocabulary of the buildings, where you have these older buildings that have punched openings, and you can even see in the rendering the stone building next door. We tried to be sympathetic to that, but yet recognize that this building is being built in modern times. So the idea was the living marquee is this piece of glass really bringing the life of the theater to the street, and that is bookended by these more traditional-looking brick buildings, if you will. We tried to break up the building and make it look more like the scale and texture of what you find on State Street with the older buildings. What you're seeing here down below, that's the entry to the theater with glass that allows you to see into the lobby. This is the living marquee above. And the windows, some of these here would be to the south stair, so as you're moving up and down the stair, you're looking back out to State Street. This is to the box office here. And then there's some others that have spandrel glass that may not be to occupied spaces, but again, we were trying to pick up the scale and character of the buildings on State Street, and so reminiscent of some of these kind of smaller punched windows that you see on some of the older buildings. Over here, this is the gate to the egress court, and we wanted the building to look like it still came across and touched the other building to continue the street. We felt that was important for the character of State Street. But this is an opening into that egress court. You'll see here there's a gate. The gate has emergency egress hardware that always allows egress from the court, but this can be secured from people coming in from the public. So it's really, it could be open, but it's intended to function as egress, and once you're already in the building, you would then come into the egress court and out. The building is concrete foundation with steel frame. It's fully sprinkled, and we talked a bit about this stair that is continuous from the basement to the roof in our earlier sessions in getting input and meeting with the fire chief. It was something we had talked about, providing access to the roof in this case on State Street, and the standpipe as well. The code for this building, you normally wouldn't have to provide access to the roof. We're not of a height that that's required, but we're going above the requirements. We also aren't required to provide a standpipe in this case for the height of this building, and that is an additional thing. We are going above the building requirements here from our discussions about how can we best give access for emergencies to the building. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or talk about more features of the building that you would like to investigate a little more.
Well, we can set those two drawings down so that at least we can let everybody back to their seats for, sure. So just while you go back to your seats, on the fire code issues, what Karen spoke about as far as the additional fire measures, because this project was reviewed, and there's actually been two building permits that were issued for the project by Howard Tanner from the county before Judge Polito's decision came out. And there was a fair amount of discussion and review of the compliance with the fire code by Howard in conjunction with the chief. And that's where, some of you remember, I know they met over the weekend and brought different fire trucks out and looked at the fire safety of the building, so I'm sure I look forward to having the chief here to speak to that directly. But that's why we are pretty far along as far as compliance with the fire code. And as you'll see in the decision, the judge doesn't say that there was anything wrong with the fire code issues. Those issues were not properly before the judge because there hadn't been an appeal of that building permit. So I'm sure we'll be talking about that in further detail as well. The next person I'd like to call up.
Wendy, before you go too far, if I may, you mentioned the fire chief, who we're all very aware of, but you also mentioned another gentleman, was it Howard? Could you explain exactly who he is?
Sure. Howard Tanner is the code enforcement officer for the county. So what he had done is looked at the project for compliance with the building code and issued a building permit as a county project. Now, Judge Polito has said that we need to go to the city, so the city will be reviewing it in accordance with the building code, which is the same code. So I would assume that there will be coordination between the city and the county in that review, but that Howard Tanner is very familiar with this, and hopefully he will be part of the city's review process as well.
And I believe Mr. Tanner is a successor for the gentleman who was quoted here this evening. Am I correct in?
I wasn't around back then.
Am I correct? All right, thank you.
Okay, sure. And also, the documents that were handed to you tonight, those were also before Judge And also the documents that were handed to you tonight, those were also before Judge Polito, and you'll see that they're actually included in our environmental assessment form. There's a number of exhibits there. And the report from Mr. Napoleon and also the CES report, there are reports that the college prepared in response to those, so those are all part of the record as well.
Please, continue.
Sure. So with that, I will have Julian Clark speak on the issue of the sub-slab depressurization system, because that was the issue that Judge Polito was very direct with, that there was a fault on the negative declaration that the college issued indicating that that should be a condition negative declaration to give the public an opportunity to be heard on that issue. And again, going back to a little bit of the big picture, what a condition negative declaration is, is to say that there's a condition that a board is going to require in order to say that there's no environmental impact. Now, there's an extra couple of procedures if you put that condition, and one of which is the opportunity for the public to comment. And that has, that's really the focal point of Judge Polito's decision, is there wasn't that opportunity for public comment. So what this board will be doing, I assume, is issuing that condition negative declaration. And there will be that 30-day window for the public to comment on that. So there certainly will be comments that will be provided to the board, and you will have to look at those comments and make a decision on whether or not that changes your decision on that condition negative declaration. So, fine. Yeah, that'd be great. And Julian is also the one that prepared Part One of the environmental assessment form. If you guys saw that, that's his signature on there.
Good evening. Thank you. Julian Clark with Plumley Engineering. I also assisted Wendy in the Seeker forms that we filled out for the college. Real quick, during the initial stages of the project, there were vapor samples collected from the original building site. They were collected from the soil beneath the building and from the basement itself. Low levels of all the organic compounds were detected, and when these levels were compared to the Department of Health guidance documents, additional monitoring was recommended based on the guidance documents. From there, a second set of samples was collected after the building had been demolished, and they still showed low levels of VOCs. As a precautionary, and these levels still requested or suggested that further monitoring be required, but as a precautionary measure, we also decided to install a vapor barrier and the SSD or the sub-slab depressurization system. Although not required, the college decided to put them in. The vapor barrier, real simple, is a impermeable plastic sheet that goes underneath the foundation, prevents any vapors from going from the soil up into the basement through the concrete floor. And the SSD, it's very similar to a radon removal system, perforated pipe in the ground below the basement floor, connected to a solid pipe that runs up to the building, to the roof, and there's a small electric fan on the roof which helps collect the vapors and send them out into the air versus going up into the basement. And that's real simple what the SSD is.
There's a negative pressure in the area below the slab.
Yes.
That's the name.
Yep.
That's the name.
Yep.
And the fan on the top creates the negative pressure.
Helps create that. Yep.
It does create it.
And then you'll also see in the environmental assessment form documents that there was a question on how do you know that that system is operational? And there was a recommendation through a consultant to the county for different sampling to be done once it's constructed to make sure that that is keeping the pressure and making sure that there's no compounds going inside the building. And that is part of the plan to have that sampling completed, and I would assume that's part of the condition that you would want to ensure that that is working properly and that the testing is done so that it is working properly.
Okay. What I referred to, and I looked through this a bit, and the letter of June 11th is where you're talking about this, a proposed monitoring procedure analysis method TO-15. Of course, this was dated June 11th. The plans I see in here are in February. Where is this shown in these plans? I don't see it anywhere in these plans. This letter is after these plans were created.
Yes, and that letter is agreeing to the recommendation that was made...
Understood, but you had, allegedly had it in there before. Where is it?
There's a drawing about, shows what the pictures that look like this was part of the original project here. And also on the foundation, there's a, they show where the perforated pipes are going to be.
Under the basement level?
Yes.
Thank you.
And those were all part of the bid documents as well.
Another question I have is this, since both these tests, the vapor intrusion tests were done, the ambient air inside the building, the building was not a tight, airtight building. The windows were knocked out of it. I've seen that building in that condition. I was there, walking right by it. Windows were out of it, everything like that. So that was not the ideal, I'm gonna say, collection atmosphere, is that the building was not sealed. You have VOCs that were detected, and of course here it says in this one report that they are found in randomly selected conventional office buildings that were exceeding those levels. My thought is, well, this stuff is already, you've got two reports here saying this stuff's in the ground. Okay, so why don't we do water and soil sampling to find out what the extent and how hot this ground is? Not only do you have an issue there at site, but you have neighboring buildings that have residences above them. In fact, the one upstairs has apartments on the Genesee Street side where these VOCs are entering, probably more than likely entering those buildings as well. So if mitigation is required for safety of this building, what are we gonna do about the site and the rest of remaining? I mean, what are we gonna do about the stuff that's in the ground here? It's not gonna stay in the confines of that border.
Mitigation is not required. These were low levels that were detected. At the most, what was required is further monitoring. The college has decided to go ahead and do the mitigation on their own as a precautionary measure, but it's not required to do that.
Well, to be safe, I think we need to have soil and water, groundwater sampling, done. We gotta know what's in the ground. Should identify, in fact, I see in the judge's decision where he says something about maybe potentially finding the source. That building was used for treating furs, cleaning furs, processing furs, and back then they would just dump those chemicals. Everyone knew it. They would dump them out the door, dump them in the basement, drain, whatever. Same thing with dry cleaning fluids. That was the same thing, that was a scenario back then. Nobody cared. So here we have this stuff in the ground, and all you're gonna do is concern yourself about this little patch of ground. What about everybody else next to it? I think we need water, groundwater and soil samples to make sure we identify what's in there and what other recommendations maybe did a neighboring properties have to be made.
According to the Phase One that actually started this somewhat rabbit hole as far as doing the sampling, there was a dry cleaning facility. These are VOCs that are associated with dry cleaning. It was actually, was it down at the...
Down gradient.
Down gradient at the corner, which is already currently covered by a road. You know, and the purpose of Seeker is to look at the environmental impact of the project itself, and the construction of a building on top of this property isn't going to exacerbate what is located in the soil or the ground.
But we have neighboring buildings. That building did use chemicals to process and treat furs. It's known in the history. In fact, in this report, it even says it was, that there's possible, potential, those VOCs coming from that previous use. I firmly believe that in order to be err on the side of caution, we need groundwater samples and soil samples to make sure we understand what's in the ground and what we can do to protect the adjoining buildings. If you're gonna mitigate the air inside this new building, we have to concern ourselves also what we should recommend neighboring buildings to do. We've got, like I say, we've got people living on apartments over these buildings, on adjacent sites, that are gonna be subjected to the same vapors from the same ground contaminants.
Wendy, if I'm interpreting you correctly, we have no authority to do that.
This board is, when we do a Seeker, we can say we want it.
We have no authority to deal with the existing facilities. The only thing we have the authority over or to work with is for the vacant property.
In the judge's decision, he said to look at all adjoining areas.
He said to look at it, but he did not say for us to mitigate the problem.
You have to mitigate the problem. It's what this whole thing's about.
I would ask you, Wendy, please.
Your obligation under Seeker is to look at the environmental impacts associated with the project, and the project is the construction of the building. And it would be the authority of DEC, if DEC required any sampling out there, there would be a direction from DEC. And I work in this area, Julian works in this area, and, you know, it's questionable whether or not DEC, you know, what their opinion would be on this. And I would be shocked if DEC is not aware of this sampling. And I would just note that I see the report that is being cited as a CES report, and we question the validity of the report based upon the author, which is part of our records as well.
Well, like I say, we got conflicting reports. So I think, again, to be err on the side of caution, we take ground sampling and make a determination of what's in the ground. Then what happens, again, if your mitigation system here, this doesn't satisfy during a monitoring? What do you do then? What's the fallback position if this does not work or does not function adequately?
Then it would have to be, it would have to be fixed so that it does function properly, and that would be part of the bid documents to make sure that the building is constructed properly, such as if the elevator didn't work, you'd have to fix the elevator. This is part of the mechanical systems of the proper operation of the...
You won't know if it works until you do some series of monitoring down the road.
Just like you would with any of the mechanical systems in the construction of any new building. These are very simple systems that are in a lot of buildings, so they're...
What is the, and again, what is the problem with doing groundwater sampling and soil sampling here? I mean, just to be err on the side of caution. Like I said, we've been subjected to enough legal banner here with challenges and lawsuits. If we were to take these samples, it's another less challengeable situation.
I...
I don't understand why we just don't do it.
I would agree with Andy's statement that we're deceiving ourselves if we think that anything that we do is going to stop the next round of litigation. And I would say that if you're directing us to take samples, I would ask you to direct every other owner on the block to take samples, especially the ones that are closer to the dry cleaning that would likely be the source. So I would ask that they do samples on their property as well.
Well, even the judge in his decision mentions the potential of doing sampling here. So like I say, to err on the side of caution, I think, my personal opinion is that we should have grounds, groundwater and soil samples on this site to see what's there. VOCs now are becoming the next hottest thing. If you look on the, all the reports and everything, VOC concentrations are becoming a very big issue. In fact, some of the previous mention of some of the levels now has been overturned. In fact, now they're looking more, again, as this Table Two and the New York State DOH Department of Health guidance on October 6th, they're looking more at that as kind of a sort of quasi-standard. And if these things exceed it, you do the mitigation exercises here. I understand these are significantly over that limit.
Actually, they're under. I think Julian has touched on...
No. Why would they say that they are, right here in this report says it's, and even in the AECC report says they're above it.
They are above the not doing anything, and they are in the, you must monitor zone.
But it does not rise to the level of mitigation.
Well, I, like I say, I would feel much more comfortable if we did groundwater and soil sampling here.
In regards to the vapor mitigation system, is this, for lack of better words, is this an industry standard or is this something that was, that was made up by yourself and your company?
It's an industry standard. Actually, if you look at the fan that they spec, it's called a radon away, so it's the same type of fan used for radon systems.
But this entire type of system is an industry standard of somewhat? Okay.
I've seen it before.
Okay. We, in the, in the, in the city, in our school district, we've tried different things and it hasn't always worked out because it wasn't an industry standard or whatever, and I certainly don't want us to put us down that road. That's the reason for my question, not your integrity.
So like I say, we have history of the building being used for treatment and chemical, possible chemical spills, if anything. I'm sure there was disposals. I really strongly and firmly feel that we need to get a handle on what's in the ground.
And just one other point on there. When someone does a Phase One environmental assessment form, I'm sure you're familiar with that terminology. A Phase One is supposed to identify whether or not you need to do any additional sampling, and they put together what's called a REC, a recognized environmental condition. And most of the time, a Phase One will say you need to do additional sampling. And the Phase One on this site recommended no further sampling because there was no evidence of spills of any previous use that would rise to the level of additional sampling. And so I...
There was no recognized environmental concern found in the Phase One. What they did find was that there was a dry cleaner up gradient of, or down gradient of the site, and they said, just as precaution, you might want to do some vapor collection in the area.
But also the previous history, historical use of this building was also used to store, clean, process and repair furs. Okay, so there's chemicals involved in those processes. I understand, as far as I know, the slab was removed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, what's the big deal about getting soil samples and groundwater now? Why, what's the big problem?
Why, should we, is that required for every project? I mean, shouldn't that...
Well, when VOCs are detected, I would think so.
But the project itself is not going to be impacting either the soil or the groundwater. And if the New York State Department...
So you're not gonna stir the ground. You're not gonna touch that ground. You're not digging into the ground. You're just gonna put everything right on top of the ground.
I think we've gone through the plans as far as how it's gonna be constructed.
I, I'm sorry, I still feel very strongly with VOCs involved that we need the ground and soil water sampling.
I would, Counselor, we take your point, and I'm not objecting to your point. I don't say whether I agree or disagree, but I would, I would like to move this forward into, to continue this discussion, if we, if we may, please.
Are there any other...
With all respect, Counselor.
Are there any other questions? Because I think, you know, that pretty much concludes our presentation. We certainly have heard the concerns of the council members, and I think the next step will be, once Steve finishes up his notes and gets a little bit more up to speed, I know he'll be assisting you in preparing the Part Two and the Part Three of the environmental assessment form.
I would ask that between yourself tonight, between yourself and Andy, and I don't want to include Steve in this, but what do you feel are the next steps in the timeliness, approximate times? I can't hold you to a...
Sure. I'll talk fast before Andy gets to the microphone.
He's slowing down a little bit, so go ahead.
I would say that once, once Steve is comfortable that he is up to speed, and there is quite a history with this, you got a couple of case decisions and, you know, quite a few documents, I would assume that he would come back to this board with a proposed Part Two and Part Three and walk you through that. And that would be the point where you're making your findings on each of the environmental issues, including this issue that we're talking about as far as whether there's a need for additional sampling. And the, I would also hope that there would be input from the fire chief directly with this board before you're making those decisions. And one more line, Andy, if I can. The one thing that Judge Polito, it's a very, very long decision, and the one thing that he did say is that there were a number of environmental issues that have already been properly investigated, so it really does come down to the ones that Andy had identified. So as you're going through Part Two and making your determinations, a lot of the answers really have been already upheld twice by a judge, and we will go right back to these core issues and making your findings.
Thank you.
I can't speak for Steve as to how long it's going to take him to come up to speed and draft his recommended answers and his recommendations to this, to this board, but I would certainly hope we'd have a better idea of what our condition negative declaration is going to look like and what it's going to say by, say, our August 8th or August 15th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Other than that, it's like my wife asking me how long a baseball game takes. I tell her nine innings, and she goes, "So how long is that?" And we never know, but time takes time.
Well, thank you. And we'll have our team here whenever, when we come back here in case you do have any specific questions for them. Yeah.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor, with your permission, let's take about a five-minute recess and, just so they can pick up some of their props and we can stretch our legs for a few minutes, so. We'll be in recess for approximately five minutes.
Mayor, Councilors, we've handed out over the past few days and emailed as well packets of information summarizing the fact that the city now has some 21 boards and commissions that were created through various means, some by city code, some by resolution, some by local law, some as a result of state law, and some identified in the city charter. We've given you a list of those commissions and boards. Now, there are, two of them are completely inactive. They're, you know, they're identified in the code, but they're not active and they haven't been since I've been here for two years. The remaining generally have appointed board members, citizens who have been appointed by the council, who contribute their valuable time to these committees and commissions to help the city. One of the problems that has emerged is not just the fact that we've got... One of the problems that has emerged is not just the fact that we've got some that are inactive, but also the fact that the active ones require staff support. It's not fair to bring the citizens together where they're contributing their time on a monthly or quarterly basis and not have adequate staff support to help them and guide them through the processes. And more and more of these meetings now are required to comply with the regular open meeting law requirements of posting an agenda, having minutes of a meeting, filing disclosure forms for the members and things of that sort. And the committee members deserve, you know, support for those kinds of activities. Also, I've been to some meetings. The committees are seeking, you know, council direction. They want to know what does the city council expect of them. I think, you know, we should be able to help them develop annual work plans where they can prioritize some ideas of things they'd like to present and suggest to the council. So those are some of the problems that exist today. I think I summarized it as we've got a lot of committees. We don't have a lot of staff to support them. And as a result, I think we see committee members getting frustrated with their inability to really feel like they're making meaningful contributions. Some of the solutions might be, and this is all something I think needs a lot of additional discussion, is perhaps abolish some committees that may no longer be relevant or haven't been active. Combine some committees where there are common interests, and we can have one body that maybe has multiple missions that are coordinated. Something that comes to mind is maybe parks and recs and neighborhood and housing. You know, those are kind of quality of life issues. And some cities actually have created quality of life commissions that look at those kinds of issues holistically. And maybe some committees need to be rechartered. One committee, for example, that's not listed here, that started as a city committee and emerged as its own nonprofit, is the Albert Beautification Commission. That might be a possibility for some of these as well. So this evening, I simply wanted to make those statements, kind of set the stage for some discussion on this topic and hopefully bring it back in the near future for further discussion and possible changes, so. That's what I had to share this evening, and happy to hear your comments at this point.
Doug, I'll jump out if I may. Are you looking for us to make suggestions on possible mergers? Or is your office going to take it out, or is it going to be both?
I'd like, we can suggest things, but I really think these are council-created committees, and I would-
The bottom line is ours, but-
It is yours, yeah. And I mean, if you don't want to do anything with them, you know, just tell me, and you know, we'll put this aside for some future discussion.
Can we get some input from the commissions themselves?
That's just what I was going to ask for, is can we get an idea of what some of these view their function as?
Yeah.
You know, from their words, not what we think they should be doing, but what they're actually doing are practical.
And I would agree with that, but also, though, Doug, I personally wouldn't want you to be bogged down with this task. I mean, obviously, we have other, not that this isn't important, but we have other pressing issues that we need to address. But I'd hate to see you bogged down in this.
Maybe we need to form a committee to oversee our committees. That's not for-
That was good, Mayor. Very good.
Well, Counselor, I appreciate that. I just worry that we've got volunteers who want to be engaged, and we're sensing their frustration as staff, and just think it's important to-
Do we have an idea which ones of these are, I'm going to say, what, lacking in, like, minutes? Things like this that we should, you know, where the staff has to fill in to do the minutes and take staff-level time to perform their functions? Is that all these, or most of them, or just a couple of them?
Most of them. Some have good leadership, and they step up and they put their agendas together and take minutes. Others really don't do much unless staff does it for them, so.
Okay.
It's across the board. You know, different committees, you know, some people take ownership of them, and are fairly good about getting agendas put together, calling meetings to order, making sure there's some minutes taken. Others, like I say, you know, they look to the city staff to help them achieve that.
Counsel, I'd be glad if I could get another member of council to join me to sit down and talk with these individual commissions or committees and get a feeling from them, and try to bring that back to the entire council, if they have another member willing to do that. I would hope that it would be one person. I'm sorry?
I'll jump in then.
Okay, great. I would like to keep it to two people, so it's consistent message all the way through. So, council's permission will go that way?
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Gray, you take care of that, and I'll read the report.
Ten-four.
Ten-four. You're still on deck.
The other item, again, it may be a short discussion this evening. We're focusing the reorganization discussion at this point on the finance department. I've talked to several of you. We've exchanged emails on different things. I know Bob is still trying to gather information to, you know, look at comparable organizational structures in other cities similar to ourselves. I shared some information we received from our auditor, who works for the city of Watertown as well as us, and shared how they're structured. But we still need to understand what additional services they provide, how big their capital programs are and things like that, so that we can kind of match apples to apples. There's different ways to do an organizational structure. I've got a couple handouts I put together real quick, just as something to think about. There's two pages to each one.
There's another set.
There's another one coming.
That's one set together.
Oh, one set together.
Yeah.
Two pages.
Does everybody have one? Just, you should have two. One should say Finance Org. #1 at the top, and Finance Org. #2 at the top. I'll just walk through them quickly as, to introduce them. Under #1, the city manager would have two reports. We'd break the department in two, basically. We would have the treasurer with some suggested functions being the assessor, parking administration, purchasing. Bob and I have talked about maybe accounting and payroll being part of the treasurer's duties. We can work that out. The other position would build up on what Counselor Camardo suggested in his reorganization plan about creating an assistant city manager for finance and administration, in this case, taking on the roles of accounting, payroll, H-R-I-T, which is now kind of a separate thing with one person and one budget under Corporation Council, engineering, and I guess I listed payroll twice there. So the idea here is two reports, the city manager. One would be actually designated assistant city manager. And one of the thoughts would be that somebody like Christina Salvick, who does a lot of work with capital programs, does a lot of work with the comptroller's office today, might fill a position like that, and we could effectively eliminate the capital projects director position. It would give the city a little bit of a succession plan for my position. But this proposal also would depend on some outside resources. As we look at the difficulty of recruiting a comptroller from the outside, I think it's easier to find people within the organization to do these duties. But we need and have for the last two years relied on outside assistance for our budgeting process. And I'm not sure that that's a bad way to continue to go, that we would have somebody on a retainer would come in and work for us for two and a half, three months during the budget process, and then we would need them the rest of the year. It would probably be more economical than trying to staff that person year-round. The other organization is similar, only we create that assistant CM for finance and admin, but the treasurer becomes designated as a deputy comptroller, reporting to that position, having the same kind of responsibilities. So in this case, instead of two reports to the city manager, there would just be a single one. Likewise, it would eliminate, under this scenario, capital project director, and we would rely on outside resources as needed. So a couple ideas. Number two kind of builds on the Watertown model. And that's more or less what I have for you this evening. Doug, I think this is a good way to start looking at things. But as I mentioned last week, I think it's important as we move into another fiscal year that we're going to need some projected numbers and cost savings with each of these proposals that you brought forward, how we can move in these areas, but also at the same time, how we can show some cost savings.
Right.
Because that's all part of reorganization, is how we can save money and do things more efficiently and effectively. So I'd like to see some numbers attached to this in the future, if you would, please.
The mayor and I met on Monday with MRV. Is it?
Diana Smith and Connie Sowards.
From MRV.
MRV, correct.
Yeah. And after coming back from that meeting, I was able to, you know, just collect my thoughts and put them down on paper. There's a couple things I think that we need to, and I mentioned this to Doug earlier in the week as well, that we need to take into consideration. As I said to Doug yesterday, I think we're getting a little bit too far into the woods. So I think council should be looking at a management structure reorganization at the top level, not going through all the way down through the department. Just, again, staying at the management structural structure. And once council decides that, whatever that management structure is, the city manager comes up with a plan, and I'm glad to see two of them here, I think what we need to do is hire capable people, and if it's a comptroller we're speaking of, we let that comptroller, if we decide to make that move to hire a comptroller, we let the comptroller and his staff, along with the city manager, of course, organize their department. And we let he or she to organize the department to meet the council priorities. And as Counselor Camardo just mentioned, cost savings, and that's why we're doing this restructuring. So again, I guess it's good to have some goals. So I think one goal, obviously, would be to reduce expenses to address reoccurring structural deficits. And that's the problem we are having now, is the reoccurring structural deficits. Secondly, would be to streamline operations. Third, establish what the finance department is responsible for. Then pick titles for a department head, and most likely, a deputy. And I'm in agreement, I think we need some, a deputy comptroller. Then hire, promote, reassign people into those slots and give them the marching orders of council's priorities. So this way, again, we're staying at the top of the, of this particular department. And really, the mayor kind of sparked this in our conversations. We talked about someone that knows the department, can go in there, restructure it, organize it, that has that know-how, that experience in doing that. So I kind of, I took that, and I thought about that, and I think that makes sense. Now, we've talked about having a September deadline. And again, I think that September deadline is for a management reorganization decision, not the whole department of every single employee. I think once this is accomplished, we can move on to the next department management level decisions. And hopefully, by then, we have a new finance team that can make decisions regarding operational issues. But I'm firmly, I think this is a step in the right direction, but the cost savings, we have to, we have to address. And two, I kind of like having a person there for 12 months, okay, that has a full command of everything within the city as far as our finances go. I know we're bringing people from April until the end of the budget to help us with that, to help us with those operations, but it's, I don't know. I think as a city, as an operational point of view, I think you need that head. You need that master of that craft of finances to be there and in charge. So, I mean, that's what I have to go. I think we're going down the right direction here, though. And we're not too far off.
Just to add to that, Counselor Smith, we need a comptroller. Call her or him, whatever you want to call her. We need somebody to do the financials for the city. We need to know where we are month by month, or we're going to have big problems.
That's the pulse of the city.
We're going to have huge problems. Things have to be done. And I don't know if they're getting done now.
And again, we want everything, as we mentioned, streamlining is one of the goals. We want everything to come through these departments. Whatever project is being proposed, it's going to come through the finance department. So now, not that this is happening, but I know it's happened on occasions where some departments are not just spending on their own. Have everything go through the finance department. And kind of have, be in that hand that slaps the other hand.
Somebody needs to be watching the other parts of the city. There's no doubt about it.
You know, Counsel-
Other than the city manager.
From old experience, that normally is the procedure. At the same time, being a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation, there are time purchases that need to be made, and then it gets out of whack. And then every once in a while, the city manager has to come in, purchasing, our purchaser has to come in and put the brakes on that. We have to keep that in mind. Counsel, I'm getting mixed understanding from the entire council. I thought I heard Counselor Smith say that we probably need a comptroller, or we possibly need a comptroller. And I'm not putting words in your mouth, Counsel, but I'm trying to say what I thought I heard you say.
What I'm saying now is a comptroller with a deputy, and I think we could bring that deputy from, we could reassign-
From within, okay, all right. And I think Counselor Gray, you agree with it. And it wasn't too many weeks ago, we decided, we told Doug to hold off on hiring a comptroller. And I'm not saying we're, I just not getting clear signal, and I don't think Doug is either at this point.
No, you're right, we did. But just to make sure, just to see what the-
The reorg-
What the reorganization would be.
Right, yeah.
So like, for instance, if someone's coming in, they're going to ask the question, "Am I going to have a deputy comptroller?", we can give them a definitive answer as to whether or not we're going to.
I think they should be part of that, to plan and put some policy in place.
I think before we get too far ahead of ourselves, we need to see what it's going to cost us and how we can come up with some cost savings in the department, especially in the finance area. So maybe by next week, Doug, you can come back with some different scenarios, what costs are going to be, or how we can have some cost savings in, say, the comptroller's office or the finance, if we combine positions, or we redeveloped a deputy position. However, you think you'd like to see that work out. But I think we need cost savings involved in it before we get too far ahead of ourselves here.
That's, the meeting that we had, and that's, I think, one of the lights that came on is to do a full inventory of your department and what people are doing, individual employees are doing. And are we, are we not multitasking? Are we not having individuals being cross-trained? That's something that could take some extensive time. But what I do think we need to do, and that's, once we have an individual in place to run the department, what we want to do is try to benchmark how many full-time employees and how much payroll go into overall activity, which I think is a very large number of hours. So that's one of the things that new director of finance, or whoever you want to call him or her, would be responsible for doing. And then looking at some type of plan, whether it is the phrase cross-utilization or cross-training can potentially take place.
Well, this is why I think we had the ladies from Seneca Falls come out here, or from the former village of Seneca Falls, I should say, give us that living within the 2% cap presentation. I think those forums- 2% cap presentation. I think those forums that they brought are a valuable tool for doing exactly what you're proposing here. I think we need to implement those even right now, if we could possibly do it. And to me, I really don't see any obstacle right now why we can't.
Counselor Smith, I think you're on the right track, not because we had the meeting, but being a former department head, all of our departments have some very good people, very knowledgeable people who know their job. They know how they can make their job better, and, not better for them, but for our taxpayers and for the overall city, the betterment of the city. We have to empower these individuals through leadership, through their leadership, as to how to get us back on course, so to speak. I think we need to take advantage of that. It has to involve cost saving. I don't disagree with that. None of us do. But I think we have to weigh in the means internally that I feel we should capitalize on and go about it. Many years ago, we had T Q M. here in the city of Auburn, total quality management. And different department heads were charged with different areas. Mine was vehicle maintenance. There was another one with another department of vehicle repair, so forth and so on. This, I think we could fashion this, I think Doug is capable of that, of taking, for example, the financial department, along with Mr. Gauthier, and taking an overall look, using, talking with their employees, how can we better, how can we better serve the public? How can we do this more efficiently? What are we not being trained on? What do we need to do? And I think that's a great place to start. It's a smaller department, but as number one, after the Corporation Council, more questions go through finance than any other department. So, I think that's very crucial, we start there. But it's small and it's manageable and we can learn from our mistakes. And here again, this is only my suggestion, but I think there's some merit to it, if you think of it.
Very early on, when I was in the seat, I brought up a potential, a suggestion, simply that, in my opinion, no one knows the job better than those people that are doing their job. That people probably themselves know better ways of doing their job, however, they don't feel like, to your point, that they have that empowerment. And again, like I said, I would like to have them, you know, we have some kind of program where they come up forward with some ideas that is going to improve efficiencies, cost savings, and benefits, that is a part of an award of the incentive, that they get a percentage of this cost savings as a monetary award, I mean, for coming forth with this. And then that savings will be propagated over the years. So, the small outlay of the, I'm going to call it the cash award incentive, as a percentage of, let's say, the first year's savings, would tend to spur and, you know, there's no greater motivator than something that can spend for many people. So, it sure gives an avenue for empowerment. They can come up with these suggestions. They get looked at financially, called and combed, and maybe perhaps one will spur another idea somewhere else and spawn some other ideas. And once you get the ball rolling for a while, you get all the low-hanging fruit and then it starts to calm down. Well, at that point, you know you pretty much got it to the optimum and then you move on. But I mean, but that kind of incentive, award system is going to bring you ideas to the table that maybe they were had in the back of their mind, saying, well, jeez, if we did it this way, we could save this or to save this much time. Well, time is money, and if they could save money and time both, we're in good shape. So, I'm just saying that very early on, I brought this up and I thought that even at that time, that it has merit. And now, I think we're going full cycle again, where I still think that type of program would have merit.
In the military, when somebody did something stupid and someone was injured seriously or unfortunately killed, they had what they called a safety stand-down. And no one did their actual job for 24 hours, but you went over safety procedures and how problems could be averted in the future. I would like to see Doug and Mr. Gauthier have a shutdown of the financial department one day, to sit down with the employees, to pick their brains, try to find out what aren't we doing? What do we need to do? How do we do it better? I would want the employees to speak really what's on their mind. I don't know how Doug would go about holding this meeting, but I think would be beneficial to all of us as to what's needed. And they have the answers internally. Any department can tell you everything's wrong.
I think you'd have to go individually so they can be honest.
Whatever, yeah. Whatever it takes, Counsel, whether it's a group or one-on-one, I don't know. But I really want to rely on the employees. They're our greatest resource and I feel we have to talk with them. And if it's one-on-one where they're more secure talking, so be it.
I don't think it's got to be a reward, because a lot of times, the reward is just somebody asking somebody what, how they feel about things and having their input brought forward. So, I think bottom line is ask them to move forward.
I think, and I think we went over this before, I don't think we can reward them. Wasn't it what we found out, that they could not receive anything like that? Maybe it was one of my bed night dreams or something like that.
I remember recess.
Okay, all right. So, I-
I have had a program like that before.
Okay, all right, great.
Yeah. I mean, these programs are common in industry.
They're kind of hard to administer sometimes, because you get wild ideas and then you have to spend a lot of time investigating them and turn out they don't pencil out. But I think it's really, I think it's a good idea to have some kind of a recognition of, you know, cost savings measures.
The first suggestion to remove council and the mayor, that's not going to work. So, we got to go on to second question, second answer, so.
And let me add that Bob has begun soliciting input from the staff there to do exactly what the council suggested. And we'll work on maybe a one-day session or two afternoon sessions and things like that.
On the same topic, is there an intermissible agreement on tax collection? Is there some agreement we have with the county?
No.
In reference to what?
And us collecting all the tax bills?
The school tax and county tax.
School tax and county.
No, well, as far as us paying them?
Yes.
School tax is mandatory by law.
Right.
We must pay for taxes we don't receive from delinquent property owners. The county, we have done, as a matter of custom and agreement, I don't know of any legal requirement to do that. But if we decline, we don't have to do that with the county. I don't believe, I don't know of anything in the law at this point that-
And we have to make them whole, correct?
The county?
Yes.
I mean, it's so, this is backwards. I mean, there's not too many other areas that do this. I mean, the county usually-
Is that only within the city, though? City-owned property, obviously, right?
The towns have that same program?
Yeah, that was my next question. Do the townships do the same thing?
Bob, can, maybe you can come to the microphone so we can get this on tape.
The counties make the towns whole. The city makes the school and the county whole. The only thing we get from the county is when they hand it over to us, we obviously derive the interest into the person pays the taxes that are outstanding.
We, can we do some research on this and see if-
I will.
Whether we're being good neighbors at the time or whether we're legally bound to-
I can tell you unequivocally that we're required to make the school whole.
Right.
I am not that clear that we are required by law to make the county whole. I'll check that, though.
Also, if you want to check something, the interest, by the time we make the school whole, they get all that interest.
The-
School gets a back.
Which I never understood that, but that's the policy.
And they don't have any money for crossing guards?
They're using us for a bank.
Yeah.
The interest may pay for the crossing guards.
That's it. We'll have to say that.
Yeah, there you go, Mayor.
There you go.
What's that?
The interest can pay for the-
Delinquent school taxes may pay for the crossing guards.
Absolutely. Let's look at it.
That meeting has been set up.
Okay.
So, we will be discussing that.
Yeah, we need to start-
But is-
Start pulling these cards out of our pocket.
But John, is the point, is there, I know you said, alluded to the schools, that's law, but you're saying it's not necessarily law as it stands for the county?
I'm not aware of that, but I-
It bears research.
I'm going to check it out. Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Anything else, Counsel, in that order, on that? No. Other business, Counsel? Counselor Camardo?
Just one quick thing. I know, Doug, we talked a while ago about excavations in the city and what our new road program, or spending a lot of money on new roads. You were going to come back with Mr. Lupien and give us an update on that and how we're handling the excavations according to the code.
Right. And I'm working with Bill. I don't know, Bill, do you want to say anything this evening? Okay.
Along those lines, we've contacted Cornell University. They have assigned an individual. We're in the negotiation phase right now to make arrangements for them to come to Auburn to instruct our D P W. personnel. In the meantime, shortly after we had that conversation, the one section of the Department of Public Works, Tom Gayback and his sewer and water, he's been going through all the sewer and water trenches. They've been excavating it. They've got their, they had a compaction equipment. They've been digging them out deeper. We went out there, a couple of our guys were kind of inspecting it the first time. They've been digging them out deeper. They've been compacting it, a couple lifts, and they've been going right through and doing several of them. So, they've been very, very aggressive doing the water and sewer trenches. We're not doing, the other group of the Department of Public Works has been so busy on their other task, they're not really doing the potholes at the same thing. I don't know, we went and I had Mark Ojewelski go through and we looked at all the equipment that they would need to purchase. We went out and got three quotes or whatever, and we forwarded all that information to Mike Talbot down there. So, I, hopefully, he's in the process of acquiring some of that equipment that he'll need so that the rest of the department can also work on the patches. So, we've been working on the training and we're working on the equipment necessary and all the rest.
But how about the independent contractors that are-
Now, the Barrett painting, we just met with them. They've, they're in the process getting their insurance and bonds. And I think the mayor probably is, if he hasn't signed it already, is probably, will probably be given the notice to proceed for that this week. And we already had the pre-bid and they're going to start in two weeks.
I'm talking about the independent contractors that do water and sewer work within the city. Are we checking them and watching them?
Oh, yeah. That's, I've also been speaking with our plumbing inspector, Carl Castiglione, because a lot of times, it's the sewer or water contractors, they have a problem on their own property, but then sometimes drift out into the city's right-of-way. He's been graciously inspecting some of those as well. And we're making sure that they get the permit as soon as possible.
Good. And just another thing, Bill, people on Richardson Avenue called me about the lights that they put up. I guess they went through and upgraded some of the lights there. So, thank you for handling that.
As far as the street lights, just giving you an update, we're allowed to request. So many get changed over each year. We went through our whole allotment there. So, basically, we won't be able to change over any new streets, probably for another 10 or 11 months. But gas and electric jumped right on it. And not only did they do the required amount, but they probably did a couple extra streets for us.
Very good.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Recap?
I think I have two. Counsel asks that staff bring a resolution regarding the Interstate 81 project, similar to the one that the town of Owosco passed to council for a vote. And the mayor and Counselor Grayney agreed to get together and meet with all of the boards and commissions and get input from them as to what they need or what they think, see that they need for better, to work better.
Anything else, Counsel? Just time, is there a request for executive session?
Yes, there is, Your Honor. It's to discuss collective bargaining agreement.
And I have a personnel item.
A two-personal.
This time, I entertain a motion for executive session for those three items. Counselor Camardo, second by Counselor Rezika. Two call to roll, please.
Counselor Grayney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rezika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. We're in recess for executive session.